Oh, thank you.
I'm gonna keep notes too, because we're keeping two of us.
Okay.
Any more discussion? All in favor? Aye. All opposed? Motion carry. Going down the list is approval of city council minutes on April 6, 2015. Those who are at your station, everybody, give you a couple of minutes to redo that real fast. Does everybody have a chance to read it? Can you get a motion approval? Can you get a second? Any more discussion on it? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. The next one will be number six, approval of accounts payable and payroll.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills with accounts payable in an amount of $196,596, with payroll in the amount of $10,870.25 for a grand total of $207,185.25.
Any more discussion on it? Okay, have a roll call, please.
Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Fry.
Yes.
Councilmember Tannen.
Here.
Councilmember Koenig.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer, present, mayor householder.
Present.
The next thing where I ask is the approval of the agenda.
I'll make a motion that we approve the agenda as stands.
Could we have a clarification, though? I'd like to clarify what blueprints we're using for the police department building, so maybe we can discuss that.
Can we have a second before we have clarification?
Is there a second? Okay, now let's go back for discussion, as can we add, I guess Regina's going to ask for amended.
Under F, new business, or do you want under unfinished business?
Should be unfinished, because...
So E, police building, and then I would like to add, under new business, F, Pat Bader.
Police building is under G, unfinished, and under...
Oh, yeah, G, yeah.
I know, I was like, wait, am I having the number right?
So let's go back, what were we saying?
Okay, we're saying G is police blueprints, and H is Pat Bader. Under unfinished business.
I would like to see it just be actually police building under G.
Police building, under G. And was that one or unfinished, or new?
New business, F.
So she's out, okay.
So, Mr. Mayor, if I may, I would also like to add an attorney report during the...
No. Pat Bader was under new business.
Under other regular business, wherever you see it.
Aye. Okay, aye.
Attorney report.
So where are we putting them?
Aye.
Aye, under other business, number seven, aye. So I guess request, can we have the motion amended for the changes?
Jim, you want to amend your motion? Jim Tanner. Do you want to amend your motion, because we added new things?
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. Yes, I would like to amend the original motion to encompass the amendments as stated.
As stated is aye, under section seven, for the attorney report. Under item nine, unfinished business, had G, police building, and under 10, F, for Pat Bader. Is that correct, Mr. Tanner?
That is correct.
Okay, we need Harold to amend his second.
I'll amend my second.
Any more discussion? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carry. Going down the list is approval of city council minutes on April 6, 2015. Those who are at your station, everybody, give you a couple of minutes to redo that real fast. Has everybody had a chance to read it? Can you get a motion approval?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes, presentation.
Can you get a second?
I'll second.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carry. The next one will be number six, approval of accounts payable and payroll.
I'd like to make a motion to pay the bills with accounts payable in an amount of $196,596, with payroll in the amount of $10,870.25 for a grand total of $207,185.25.
A second. Any more discussion? Let's move down the list, is police advisory committee report.
Was there proposed, updated? Passing out here. The, whenever, the meeting was not held this past Wednesday night, so that still is pending and on the table, and we'll be meeting next Wednesday night, and then we'll have the report.
Okay. Going down the list is fire department report.
We had a total of 67 calls last month, 32 of which were in the city. We had 29 medicals, two fire alarms, and an odor investigation. Brought our year-to-date to 185 calls for the year. We're 55 calls ahead of last year, so we're keeping right along, pretty busy month. Few things, if you're not friends with the Fire Department's Facebook page, join that, you can see the updates that we're putting on there, trying to put them up there weekly, as far as the new truck, it's at Spencer's. It should be scheduled to be done, hopefully by the first week of June, we should be getting it, somewhere around middle of June, 1st of June. Should definitely be here for the 4th of July parade. Other than that, I know last, two weeks ago, you guys did the fireworks letter, whatever, signed that, I was just at the school board, we approved the usage for the field, so everything's on track to do the fireworks, and getting everything scheduled for that, so right on track. Any questions, comments, for me?
What was the odor, odor call you had?
I don't remember. Those non-rememberable colors.
All right. Going down the list was the DDA report. Did we have anything?
I see that in the packet.
Basically, we just talked about, we talked about the railroad street project, and focusing on the mural, possible mural that we're going to put on the wall of, what's that building called?
The Old Boss.
The old Moskowitz. We talked about that. We talked to Debra Patsir, who was our planner, and she says she's 99.9% complete with the development plan update for doing all of that area. We'd love to purchase those two parking lots over there, as we talked about and been discussing here for the past few months, behind the old video store. The DDA did purchase the house on 519 Monroe Street. We did get cosigners on our bank checks, bank signatures. And we adopted our annual calendar, but we're going to change it again, I think, because we're not going to meet on Thursdays again, so that's to come.
And we have a special meeting.
Oh, yes, we do have a special meeting coming up to discuss the changing of the date. Thank you, Pat.
The next one is Parks and Recs report.
I'm Tukel McLeary, chairman of the board for Parks and Rec. April 22, at 3:00 PM, this is, that's this Wednesday, is Earth Day. We're looking for volunteers to show up at Lyons Park to help pick up and just kind of clean up all the trays, so everyone is welcome. We've invited this school, to my knowledge. The next thing is going to be Friday, at 3:00 PM, this is Arbor Day. And across the country, Arbor Day, all cities try to plant a tree on that day, and that's what we're doing at the Northside Playground. We're going to be planting a Zestar apple, and that's going to be a golden crest, my understanding is. So everyone is invited, and that's this Friday at 3:00 PM, at Northside Playground. We're hoping to have maybe the newspaper there also, get some positive information from Bangor into it. Other than that, any questions from anybody? Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, I'm going to kick over to Ken, for Train Day.
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. I'd like to say I know a lot about it, but Liz knows a whole lot more about it. And then I would like to ask if I can just turn in the airport report, or if you want to ask me some questions, we'll do that.
All right, well, I'm here to talk about Train Day, and I did bring out, one part of our annual celebration is getting a proclamation written by you wonderful people, so there is a copy of it, I believe I have enough copies for all of you. Just a little history, National Train Day, which they have renamed Amtrak Train Days this year, celebrates the pounding of the Golden Spike, which was the completion of the Transcontinental Railroad. Bangor being train city USA, you know, we get a lot of pride here. One of my favorite facts to point out to people not from the area is that we are the smallest community in the United States with an operating Amtrak station, so, you know, it's a lot to celebrate. We are also the only Amtrak station in all of Amburran County, and exciting for us that are a little more into numbers, we are on pace to be the highest increase in ridership in the state of Michigan, so, and double digits, 13.4% right now, so, a little bit excited about that, where it's a lot of people getting off and on the train in Bangor lately, so, any questions I can answer you guys about?
Just one, I did, you might have said it, but I did not hear the date.
Oh, May 9. Yes, we will be celebrating on changes this year with Train Days, but we got to pick our own day.
So you've got the date, but what time?
We are going to be starting at 7:38 in the morning, that will be the new Amtrak schedule, as of May 4, so the Amtrak will be arriving a little bit early, anybody that likes to sleep in, it's a good one.
Seven what?
7:38, yep. And then we're going to be kicking off a secondary celebration, just so you guys know, we'll be celebrating 10 years in the building in downtown Bangor, which we're also very, very excited about, and we're going to be having the Deep Fried Pickle Project playing, I'm not sure if you guys are familiar with them, but they're a jug band, and they make all of their own instruments. Garrison Keillor is working on a movie with them right now. Garrison Keillor is working on a movie with them right now, but they will be featured in it, so they got a little bit of their own press and hoping to bring a ton of people down to Bangor that day.
That's good.
Fingers crossed in the leather. Any questions I can answer for anyone, how awesome trains are?
I'll just make a comment. Last year, some people asked where all the council members were, because there's only a couple of us there, and I'm just encourage everybody to go if it possibly can, because it's a real neat deal.
It is definitely, and it's a lot of fun, you know. There's only a handful of stations across the United States that are able to put on an event like this, and we are very fortunate to be able to do that for the community. We'd like to see the community come out and, you know, cheer the train as it takes...at least as the train leaves out of Bangor. Anything else for you guys, maybe?
Thanks, I think that's it. I'd like to ask the City Council to approve his Amtrak date proclamation. As it stated?
We approve the proclamation for the City of Bangor design...designating May ninth, twenty fifteen, as Train Day in Bangor.
How's that? All in favor? All opposed? Motion carried. So this is a Amtrak Train Day proclamation, City of Bangor. Proclamation of the City of Bangor, designating May fifth, twenty fifteen, Train Day in Bangor. Whereas America is celebrating Amtrak Train Day on May ninth, twenty fifteen, a commemoration of completion of America's first transcontinental railroad, and whereas federal and state transportation departments have made expansion of a high-speed intercity passenger rail top priority in building twenty-first century structure, and whereas a healthy freight and passenger rail network is essential to keeping the American economy moving efficiently, and whereas Bangor has benefited from the train service of the Amtrak Pierre Marquette routes, and whereas Amtrak continues to work with states on development of the next generation of high-speed and intercity passenger rail trains, which create good jobs in the United States by resc...resc... Rescoring the domestic and manufacturing base, and whereas Amtrak ridership has grown nearly fifteen percent since two thousand nine, and the railroad carried thirty-one million passengers in twenty fourteen, and whereas four thousand two hundred and five passengers boarded or disembarked Amtrak trains in the City of Bangor in twenty fourteen. Now, it resolved that the City of Bangor greatly benefits from its place of the intercity rail network. Passenger rail brings travelers back to American downtowns and designates May ninth, twenty fifteen, Train Day in Bangor.
And free cake.
Free drinks for everybody.
You know, the Pickle Project is going to actually have kids make their own engines, and they're going to play pickle bucket. They're excited to be in Pickle Town, so. And to give you one more quick thing, is thirty-one million passenger miles seems like quite a bit, but in nineteen thirty-one, I mean, not miles, passengers, in nineteen thirty-one with sixty million people in the United States, there were two billion passengers.
Wow, man.
So if you allow me to present this quickly, that...
Go ahead.
You know, I represent the city on the airport board, and the Yankee Air Museum has been coming, and this is a B twenty-five. It's the only...actually made, was fought in World War II. All the others never made it to World War II, and they bring it here every couple of years, and they want to give this to the...the Air Museum wants to give this to the City of Bangor.
Fantastic.
And then right here is the audit and the audit, and I'll leave that someplace here, and then right here tells a little bit about what's going on at the airport. As you know, the city has to put money up. We don't have a choice, and we tried to get out of that a few years ago, and we found out we didn't. But next year, last year, you had to put a little over six thousand dollars. It looks like it will be about half that much next year, and the airport has been using it more all the time. That's basically where it's at.
You guys want to see what that's called?
What you have there in front of you is the reason for the airport. Also gives the last month...well, this month's minutes, and also the expenditures. To give you an idea for next year's project, they'll be buying a new snowplow and snow removal, and the federal government kicks in all this money, so they'll spend a hundred and sixty-one thousand dollars for a nice new snowplow. So that's...it'd be nice to have that in Bangor.
They let us borrow it a couple days ago.
Everybody, your copies in this?
Yes, sure.
Well, they told me once, and I've forgotten.
A thousand. A thousand. Well, you want...I know you're on Trevor, you talk about shipping on the rail in the nineteen twenties, over a million barrels of apples were shipped out of Bangor on the train each year.
Thanks, Mike, Ken.
Appreciate it.
The next one is going down the list is item G, the Freedom of Information Act.
This was a really nice one, I thought, put out by Michigan Municipal League in July first, twenty fifteen. There are some changes that are going to be made to the FOIA, and this explains all of them, and it's got all the handouts, and it's got a sample form from the City of Kalamazoo and how theirs is written up. We're going to have to change ours to match the law, so I just thought this was something that the council would like to read. It's got an itemization form. It's got a lot of resources in it.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? When are we going to update ours?
Well, you should do it really soon. So I pulled that chapter, I mean, I pulled that policy, so we should alter it to look like this one.
So is that anything? Next one. Going down the list next is the White Kane Days, May ten through May seventeenth, Harding's Market.
Not really. I talked to John Burnside, and I think this really just requires a permit for him to do it, but he wasn't sure, so we put it on the agenda, but anyone who knows, you know, somebody asked him, it's only tenth through seventeenth at Harding's Market, so.
They applied for the peddler's permit?
I think that's what it is, yeah.
Doesn't he leak the most on that?
No.
Okay. The next thing is the amended agenda, item I, Attorney Report.
Later this week, I'm going to be scheduling a meeting with myself and Regina with representatives of PCI, along with their attorney. I've been contacted by their attorney and spoke with Regina on this last week. I was contacted by a council member, and I expressed concerns that...about a lack of clarity in terms of exactly what was expected of me with regard to PCI and status of PCI involvement with the city, and so I am going to find myself to schedule that meeting to fit everybody's schedule. Hopefully, we can make it work as quickly as possible before the next council meeting so that I can come back, or Regina can come back to the council and basically lay out where things stand with PCI on the discussions. A contract rather than a letter of understanding. The FOIA packet that was included today is fantastic. You may recall several months ago, we talked about the fact that FOIA was changing, and I was advised in January that MML was going to be preparing, basically, all of these updates, and I'm glad...I was hoping it would be out a little bit sooner, but you certainly don't want to pay me to do something that they are already providing. I encourage the council to look at those carefully. I think you will find the forms that they provide you to be so extensive that you may think that they are overdoing it a bit. I encourage the council to consider the fact that the more detailed, the better, not only for the city, but also for the residents and the property owners in the city who are making FOIA requests, because it very clearly reflects the obligations of the city with regard to FOIA requests, so I encourage you to take a really close look at that FOIA packet. It is really good. I was also contacted last week by a city council member with regard to concerns that had been expressed over the way that the last meeting was conducted in terms of improper or inadequate following the rules of parliamentary procedure. I watched the last meeting on YouTube and took considerable notes, and I do have some comments regarding parliamentary procedure, but I would ask...I would simply want to point out to the council that I find nothing that indicates that this council or prior councils has ever adopted Robert's Rules of Order as being the basis for which the city council operates. That's not unusual, because you will find that Robert's Rules of Order are typically adopted by much larger organizations, where you have tens, dozens, twenties, hundreds of members, where Robert's Rules of Order would be more appropriate. You will also find in the Michigan Municipal League Ethics Handbook, the statement that Robert's Rules of Order are strictly not intended for small government operations like the City of Bangor. They didn't use Bangor as its own example, but it does reference five or seven-member city councils. That does not mean that the council should not have a working understanding of parliamentary procedure. The reason parliamentary procedure is so critical is because the clerk is obligated to prepare a record of the meeting in the form of minutes, and since those minutes, not the video on YouTube, but since those minutes constitute the record of the meeting and what happened at the meeting, it is vital that everyone have a very clear understanding of how this is acted. Where I found the council to go astray last...at the last meeting was it happened here tonight already, but when there is a motion, another word should not be spoken until there's either a second calls for discussion, or the person withdraws their motion, but there should be no interrupting. The council members also have a tendency to talk over one another, and during the discussion, I'd ask the...probably the best way to create a clear record would be for the mayor in conducting the meeting to simply recognize each member individually on each point that's being discussed, rather than having a free-for...it is just a matter of procedure for a clear record. It's not intended to squash anybody speaking their mind or saying their point or asking questions. That's all encouraged. It's just so that it's a clear record. Other than that, I found that Kim, in her role as clerk, corrected the council where it was appropriate, and I think you can count on the city clerk to do that, and that is one of the functions of the city clerk, would be to remind the council of proper parliamentary procedure. But any...unless somebody can show me otherwise, any indication that the city's obligated to follow Robert's Rules of Order as their form of parliamentary procedure, as strict as it is, is simply incorrect. Also, I wanted to talk about the Open Meetings Act. There has been some discussion at last month's meeting about the way that Regina's contract was discussed in an open meeting, and I wanted to, perhaps for everyone's benefit in the room, indicate that the Open Meetings Act has one section that talks about what meetings can be conducted in a closed session. It's very limited, because it...the government, our local form of government, our state form of government supposedly, is founded on the idea of operating in the sunshine, operating in a transparent fashion. So the legislature has seen fit to limit those circumstances when the council can go into a closed session. Discussing the city manager's contract is not one of those. It's not included. In fact, it absolutely had to be discussed in an open session, and the reason for that is, had it been discussed in a closed session, it would have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Had it been discussed by the members with the...with the city manager independently, if there were more than four of you in the room with her to discuss it, it would have constituted a quorum, and it would have been a violation of the Open Meetings Act. Absolutely had to be conducted in an open meeting. The Open Meetings Act does allow for negotiations of collective bargaining agreements to be done in closed session. That would be with your police department, with any other set of city employees that is unionized, and you're coming up with a collective bargaining agreement. That absolutely can be conducted in closed session, because the statute says that you can't. Other than that, what happened here last month was not improper, and it was appropriate. Lastly, a couple other things. There's a lot of confusion. It's not an uncommon source of confusion for city councils when they're talking about...when they see a resolution in front of them instead of a motion, and they get confused as to what requires a resolution and requires a motion. It depends on the set of circumstances, and frankly, the question would simply be to the clerk whether or not that situation called for a resolution. If you're setting city policy, if it's a matter of city policy, you're adopting a long-term contract, you're doing any of those...setting policy requires resolution. So basically, if you are faced with a situation and you don't know the answer to that question, you would want to look in advance to find out whether or not you would be talking about a resolution or a motion. Lastly, there's also been a lot of discussion. There were some at last month's meeting with regard to the city being like another business and employees, and it came up in the context of discussion about Regina's proposed contract and disability, the length of time that she would have to do that. There's a very important distinction between public and private sector employees, and so that is...there is reasoning behind the madness, and it is because public sector employees are deemed to have what we call a property interest in their jobs, whether it's stated as being at-will or not. Everything about a public employee's job is considered a property interest in that to the person who holds the job, and as you know, one cannot be deprived of property without due process, and so the public employees have a special degree of protection, and that's why it's...you want to be sure that when you're talking about employees of the city being just like the employees of any corporation or business, that's not exactly correct, and you want to be careful when you're talking about that. I think I touched on everything that I've been contacted on, and again, I'm hoping to have that meeting yet late this week or early next week, so we can be here in time for the next regular meeting of the council to discuss PCI. That's it.
Another thing I'd probably hit you up on would be a summary for the Ethic Report that came out.
Oh, what last...Ethics Report, thank you, is the Steve Schultz...Regina may know more than I do, but the report is due April twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth, and so it's the...there was some delay in that the person who had filed the complaints had yet to meet with Attorney Schultz, and that's my understanding that that has now taken place, and so now that that's done, the final report is being...needs to be in the hands...it should be here at City Hall, April twenty-seventh or twenty-eighth.
I got something. We...with Regina's report here that she turned in to us, and just like that, we didn't...we had the police advisory, we didn't bring it up, but I'd just like to have her talk a little bit about...
Well, that's below.
That's down farther.
All right, it is down farther?
It's at the very bottom. E under ten.
No, let's move down the list. Next one is opportunity for public comments. Please state your name, stand up three minutes. Any public comments tonight? Moving down the list was unfinished business on the Winkle Tower lease.
I have an update on that as well. I talked with Regina last week about the Winkle Tower lease, and it can review it at the last regular meeting. It's my understanding that Mr. Winkle was bothered about one provision that's in the lease as it stands, and that provision relates to the city's right to purchase the tower for a specific sum of money at any time during the term of the lease, and it's my understanding that he would rather have that be a right of first refusal, meaning if he decides to sell at any time during the life of the lease, that he would have to give the city the first chance to buy it before he sells it to a third party. I'll turn to Lucas, because I think in last month's meeting, you had had conversations with him, and I don't know the latest beyond that, so I didn't want to give you anything that wasn't what you were expecting.
Well, I haven't talked to him since that conversation. Where we left off, he was going to come by the City Hall, pick up a new copy of the contract and a copy of the spec sheet for some of the devices that could be put up there. He wanted to have an idea of wind loads and stuff like that, how much pressure to put on the tower there. His major concern with that portion of the contract was that the city would decide one day to kick him off of it, and I told him what I specifically myself was looking for in there was the same sort of arrangement that, you know, he had had with us, and I didn't... And I didn't see, my, his equipment, his repeater that he uses and the things that he has up there now couldn't stay up there and that be included even if it was sold in the contract that he's able, you know, for, I asked him, you know, well, do you want it to continue for the rest of your, longer term than that? Are you thinking you're going to hand this off to somebody else or sell it or, and he wasn't sure, but he wanted to think about how he wanted that to be and, and what a fair price would be, not based on market value 10 years from now or speculating. That was the other thing that I had wanted to see in there was that we set a hard number in there now so that there was no saying, oh, well, this guy's offering me $100,000 for it. You guys have all this money invested in this tower now and you have to bid against another guy or take your stuff down. So he seemed pretty open. He was just nervous when he read it. After we talked for a while, I think he was, you know, really just interested in making sure that he didn't, you know, get pushed out, so.
I would ask the, I would ask the council to allow me to deal directly with Mr. Winkle so that we can get the final terms of that sent to be presented at the council.
Can I get a motion, what Brian just said?
I'd like to make a motion to allow City Attorney Brian Noteck to deal directly with Mr. Winkle as in regards to the Winkle Tower lease contract.
I'll second it. Any more discussion on it?
Yeah, how long a term? We discussed different lengths. How long a term is this lease going to be for?
Well, we, we gave him a one-year lease while we figured it out.
Right.
And I think he's, but the standard that he's had is seven years. I know the city can only do up to X amount of time. I wanted to see the contract to have something in there that explained, that prevented somebody, you know, I don't want to see five years from now, you know, a whole new council come in and kick him off the tower. And he doesn't want to see that either. That's part of the concern there. He wants to make sure that he's still protected. He is willing to part with it at some point, I think. If, I just want to make sure that we can have some protection on our side, that nobody takes advantage of the fact that we're using it. And I don't want to see us have to go build one either because we've invested in the infrastructure around the city and then we're told it's our property, well, you can't have the tower because we'd still be in the same boat, you know? So I think it'll work out. It should be pretty simple.
Thanks. I'd like to, just like Luke said, there should be something in there, some kind of an idea what a fair price is so we don't get stuck, like he said, maybe five or 10 years old and then the price jacks up and everything. So if we could get him to agree to some sort of a fair viewpoint on that.
Thank you, John. Any more discussion?
I believe, don't we, aren't we obligated to pay fair market price as a public entity where to purchase that?
That's, fair market price is negotiated as long as it's an arms-length transaction.
Okay, gotcha.
Any more discussion? Any other's motion on the table? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Negotiation, yeah.
Who was the second on that?
It was Danny.
Danny. Going down the list was softball leagues.
Yeah, I just wanted to update the council. I did contact Kathy Sparks and she said she could not get enough interest in the leagues to, so she won't be doing them.
Well, it's still kind of help mention give the City Hall, they can borrow the money they needed.
She's got a couple days she's going to.
They'll still probably have a tournament for this.
Yeah.
She's still doing that.
That's too bad.
Yeah. Alrighty. Next one is revised manager contract. I think everybody's had a chance to have a copy of the contract in a package.
By the way, a reminder to the council that we'll ask regular meeting to approve the contract with Regina, subject to the revisions that you've made. So I'm just simply asking the council members to confirm that the changes that you were expecting to be there have been approved. Regina, have you been, you're satisfied?
Mm-hmm. Yes.
Actually, you don't have to do anything.
We don't have to do anything.
Approved. So you just need to sign the contract.
Okay. The only problem is, not a city clerk here.
Can't sign it till you have a clerk.
You got it. So we'll probably bring that up in the city council meeting.
It's been approved and it can be signed.
As soon as she comes back, if you do it.
Yes. No further, it doesn't have to come back to the council.
Okay, thank you, Brian. Going down next is David Walton, revised certification.
Yes, when Randy Parrott sent this in, he was told that part of this had already been done. So you just really need to do the, on the map that shows 617 feet of it. So we need to redo it. We need to reapprove it.
Is that the one?
Yeah, yes.
Those were all the 87 ones that we read last night.
I'll use.
You want to do a print?
At a regular meeting of the city council of the city of Bangor, Michigan, held at the City Hall, 257 West Monroe Street, Bangor, Michigan, on April 20th, 2015, the following resolution was offered by council member Fred Hicks and seconded by council member.
Wait, have a second.
It could be a new action. So I just, what I would do, Fred, is just continue to read the resolution and wait for a second.
Okay. Whereas the city of Bangor did on January 28th, 2000, acquired title to David Walton Drive and whereas it is necessary to furnish certain information to the state of Michigan to place the street within the city street system for the purpose of obtaining funds under Act 51 PA 1951 as amended. Now therefore it is resolved, line of said street is described as, commencing at the east quarter point of Section 12 Township 2 South Range 16 West Bangor Township, Bambier County, Michigan, thence north 89 degrees 59 minutes 36 seconds west along east and west quarter line, a distance of 1,748.4 feet, thence south 0 degrees 0 minutes 24 seconds west, a distance of 8.89 feet to the easterly line of road, thence along easterly line south 41 degrees 59 minutes 41 seconds west, a distance of 190.55 feet, thence continue along said easterly line on a 583.2 feet radius curve to the left to the end of a cord bearing south 32 degrees 47 minutes 52 seconds west, a distance of 186.42 feet, thence continue along said easterly line on a 3,213.48 feet radius curve to the right to the end of a cord bearing 8 degrees 5 minutes 1 second, a distance of 502.33 feet, thence continue along said easterly line south 32 degrees 33 minutes and 59 seconds west, a distance of 374.22 feet, thence south 57 degrees 27 minutes 50 seconds east, a distance of 183 feet to a point of beginning. Thence, south 57 degrees 27 minutes 50 seconds east, a distance of 617 feet to the easterly end of said street. That said street is located within a city right-of-way and is under the control of the city of Bangor. That said street is a public street and is for public street purposes. That said street is accepted into the city local street system and was open to the public prior to December 31st, 2014.
Give me a second to that.
Okay, Danny, second.
Brian, you have a moment.
Yes.
Any more discussion on it? Camaro, call.
Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer, yes. And?
So high for me.
And Mayor Householder?
Yes. Motion. The next thing on here was the E, citizen complaint. I'm going to talk about that a little bit in a minute, please.
This is a procedure where we get, if the complaint comes in and there's a form, this will came in through email, they get a letter back which you see their copy that they've gotten and then they will receive a formal response within 30 days as to be brought to the city council at the next meeting, discussion. And I don't really, it's kind of vague because the dates and times and just broad. And the complaint was pretty nonspecific too, just a feeling being treated unfairly and rude remarks, but no actual examples of what that was.
She showed up to one of the meetings that we had, I believe it was at the fire department. You remember that? I can't remember how long ago that was. Couple months ago, maybe, back at the beginning of the year. What's that? Fire station. And she was more specific then and she was told to file a complaint and that's what she did. But I remember she was having some sort of issue with her water, I think it was, because she lived outside of the city and she's one of the only ones that has water outside of the city, is that correct?
She's in, she's not the only one, but she is in Bangor Township and she's got water. And it's a rental and the tenants left her water bill. And that's what started the whole thing.
And I believe she showed up to deal with it and she was complaining about how she was being treated. That's, I'm, of this, but I do remember, remember her talking about it then. I would like to see the city manager follow up since there's not very much information here, at least follow up with her and get a little bit more information as to what was appropriate and what remarks were said.
Thanks, Luke.
Do we need to make a motion for that or?
No.
Any more discussion on it? You guys want to talk about it? Alrighty. Let's go down the list, was Regina first?
Oh, spring cleanup, yes. I got the numbers from Bestway and also from Republic. And I was told that the time starts when they leave the facility and then when they get back. So it's their travel time and all. It takes about seven hours, two trucks. The fall one didn't do very well because it wasn't very well advertised. They collected two tons, but in the spring they did 21 and 64/100 tons. So there was a big difference in what they picked up in the spring. I did speak with PCI and they said they would schedule a couple guys so that we don't have to pay for the helpers because the helpers are extra above and beyond the truck. The helpers are $31 an hour with Bestway and $50 through Republic. So when I did the math, it was theirs, their seven and a half hour day and the, in the spring, reliable would be $2,937.78 and Bestway would be $2,917.68. They charge different with their, their, and then they charge different with their tonnage. So when you take that into consideration, you're within 20 bucks with the one or the other.
Could you read the figure for Republic one more time? I'm sorry.
Republic, $2,937.78. So, and they, they're familiar with your neighborhoods, your streets.
Yeah, didn't Bestway have a limit on the length of?
They also said they didn't want to pick up anything over five feet, but I, I did contact them, you know, five feet in length and asked them if they would pick up couches and they said yes, they would. So they, they would pick up probably anything that Republic would pick up. But whether they would be as familiar.
What about tires? That's separate, right? What do you?
Tires are unacceptable.
Right.
What, how, what have we done in the past there? Is that strictly individual?
What's that?
For tires. We haven't done.
We've never, have we ever had any? Anything?
I don't remember ever doing tires.
No.
Places you have to pay for them to.
You can take them to Paw Paw. I think it's in June when they have their hazardous waste.
They have the hazardous waste, you can take them.
Wasn't that what we discussed in our last meeting? A dollar attire? I could get you those dates.
You can take them to Paw Paw when they have their hazardous waste and Regina said she believes it's a dollar attire. They'll take like your old paint and all that stuff, freon and all that stuff that nobody else wants.
So do we need a motion on that or?
That's, we're in a motion, I think, basically to the agreement to have spring cleanup. We probably just let Regina, Regina pick out. She wants to go Republic, let her take control of that. And I think the other part of that would be set in a date if it is approved.
So, I move that we use Republic spring cleanup.
I'll second. Any more discussion on it?
About the date.
One motion at a time. Any more discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Roll call.
Okay, roll, roll call. But we didn't have a dollar.
Oh, sorry. Okay. Okay, roll call. Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Fry?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tem Farmer, yes. And Mayor Householder?
Yes. Motion approved for spring cleanup by Republic. The next thing is setting a date. Regina, any recommendations?
Well, we need to add first and probably actually call them and just make sure that, you know, what fits in. So maybe, maybe the 9th of May would be good because we could advertise and have them time to get it on their schedule, but I hate to say that in case that wouldn't work.
Council have to be the one that decides the date or can we just give the authority to Regina and have her advertise it and?
Of course, yes.
Yes, we can.
You can give it to Regina.
Yes, we can.
So, so basically just have a motion to give Regina authority to get everything set up and do it.
Okay. I'll make a motion that we give Regina authority to go and contact the trash removal for the pickups and she can sit to take it, and her check.
We're about also posting it in the paper.
And on Facebook.
I'll second. Any more discussion on it? Let's go do a roll call and that because we've got to spend money in the paper.
Okay, hang on. Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Fry?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Me, yes. Mayor Householder, sorry.
Yes.
Mayor me.
You try doing this.
I know it's tough. You're doing a fine job.
Mr. Mayor, before you move on to your business, I would, I would ask the, come back to the citizen complaint item on the agenda. I misguided the council and the question to me was, do we need to take action on that? You do need to table it, officially table it. It's on the agenda as unfinished business, meaning it's an action item. So I would ask the council to, if you're not going to do any action at this next meeting, that you table it.
Can I get a motion, have it tabled?
I move to table the citizen complaint while Regina, motion.
I'll second. Any more discussion on it? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
My apologies.
The next one is G, police building on the amended agenda.
Yeah, I'd like to be clear on what floor plan we're using because I'm not sure. And Chuck Moore had a couple different guys set up today that he could have brought through, but because of the confusion, he called and canceled. So I, I just need to know, and I've got the one blueprint if you want to look at that. So I, I need to know, are we leaving the floor plan the same and just doing the wiring and fixing it up and windows and getting them in there or are we remodeling it?
Okay, we, the one that, this shows the footing, I thought that's the one that we were going to go with.
That's a remodel.
When we made them several months ago now, that was for the floor plan that was in the blueprint. It was not to just go in there. It was to go with the blueprint that we had paid for, that we had done. And then the, the one that you had touched up was the one to add the footers, but it was the same plan. And I think we've already made that motion, so if you need another motion, by all means.
Just need to know what, which one we're using. I don't, if you've already voted on it, I just need to know.
Do we have a blueprint date or which print?
Can we discuss this without a motion or?
Yeah, no one's made a motion, go ahead.
Okay. Until we have the money or a commitment for the money, I believe we're going to have to come up with a plan just to restore what we got.
The, the.
I don't want to get halfway through, run out of money and now we've spent all the money and this, we still can't use it.
Well, one of the things that's on the agenda that we haven't discussed yet, but the police vehicle, it looks like we might have a way to fund that outside of the original idea for that, which means we have over $60,000 available in the. which means we have over sixty thousand dollars available in the police building and equipment fund, which is a long, long ways towards getting that blueprint done to the floor plan that we have. The other option is if it's going to be over, as she gets the quotes together, then we can revisit it then. If it's going to be ten thousand more, then we revisit it then. Maybe we get a loan for ten thousand. But sixty thousand dollars is a long way towards a project. We've already voted on it, and I almost don't see why we're revisiting it at this point, because the, they asked her to move forward on was the gathering all the quotes and getting everything figured out so that we could get the project started with the blueprint that the city had, when the police committee, or the police building committee was involved, and the city paid three thousand dollars for blueprints from a place down St. Joe, I believe.
Well, I think Regina's asking for what to quote.
Right.
So, so I think Regina's kind of saying, I can go get quotes, but when I see the whole project, that's what she's saying, I guess I'm not going to quote the whole project. We're looking at, what are we going to quote? Wiring, drywall?
That's not what she's asking. She's, are we just going to go in there and not change the floor plan?
Yeah, what branch are we going?
Or are we? But we already, we already voted on it and directed her to get the quotes based on that blueprint.
So we're using that blueprint, okay.
Yes.
And then if we have an issue where it's too high or something else, but we can't get there if we don't start. So we have to get those numbers, come back, look at them, see if they fit within what we have, or if we can make them work. If they can't, then we got to, but in the meantime, we already voted on it three months ago, I think it was.
I know, but part of that money is halfway committed. If we get a grant for another police car, we are obligated to buy it, and-
We haven't applied for any grants for another police car. The, the car that she's got listed here in the paperwork, she's talking about leasing with monies outside of that police equipment fund. So what I seen earlier, I misunderstood how that money, it wouldn't be coming out of that. And I, I feel comfortable with that money not coming out of there. But regardless, we're not committing to getting the numbers. Once we see the numbers, if they don't add up, or we don't know where the monies come from, then we don't do it.
Have we heard back from Paul?
No. So I don't know what's going on with him.
Yeah.
Hard to get ahold of.
Is he?
Yeah, he's just a busy guy, so you call him, email him, call him, call him.
The, the next time there's a-
So I gave up, man.
Yeah, the next time there's a grant available would be in the fall, is that?
In the fall. And we're on that.
Do you have a list, or will, are we already on the list?
We're on the list. We're just, we're obligated.
Can the two of you work together to get ahold of Paul? Because I know he had, we had discussed, like, a low-income loan. You know, if we could give, you know, if he could give us sixty thousand, you know, and then we had the additional monies, we should have plenty for both activities. So can the two of you work together to do that?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that would be the smartest thing to do. First, we need to get the numbers. If it ends up being within our budget or a little over, you still want to make sure you have headroom for the project. You don't want to butt it right up to it. But I'd like to see the police department with a building before the party. And I would also like to see them with two cars, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I'm not again, I would like to see it completely renovated or remodeled. I'm just saying, we've got to be cautious with our money here.
Right, right.
And if we got, don't have a loan commitment, and, and we got part of the money that we have already-
Committed.
Partially committed, we have to take that into account.
Absolutely. But there's plenty of places that we can look for a loan, so hopefully they can get it figured out.
Okay, so if I'm understanding this correctly, all Regina's going to do is get us numbers, get us quotes. These two ladies are going to work together, see if they can get ahold of Paul, and see if he will say yea or nay to our low-interest loan.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Now, let's move down the list. Now we're finally to new business. They're discussing a town hall meeting. I would recommend we wait until we update our budget and take care of this information with PCI contract, PCI, before we have a town hall meeting. Because I think on agenda would be, number one, our budget. Number two, direction DPW. Number three, you know, introduction of city manager, introduction of police chief, of the DDA plan, and also a better update to the direction of the Bangor Police Station.
Okay, I make a motion to table the time, as far as setting a date, until we have more figures to work with.
I'll second. Any more discussion?
Yes. If we're going to do this, or this, how soon are we going to get going on this in order? Because we don't want to take too long before we do have a town hall meeting. And of course, we do want all the figures there to present, but at the same time, I think we need to get that accomplished, what we do need as soon as possible.
Well, I think that's what the citizens are going to look for, are these details, what we're talking about. First of all, it's going to be always our budget, what money we got, where it's going. And I think right now, as I stated before, what's the direction we're going DPW, okay? They also want to know the status of the police building. You know, I think, you know, we're still finishing that final plan for the DDA. I think we want that proposed on it.
Yeah, I-
There's a lot of information there.
I contacted Deborah Patchett, and she is going, and I talked to Bob Emmert yesterday or the day before, and I advised him that she has everything put together. She's not going to be able to make the meeting herself, but she is going to send the material up and everything, and Bob's going to make the presentation.
Any more discussion? Is a motion table to table it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Next thing was brought up was third quarter budget figures. Regina?
Right, this was something too that's probably premature. I had been asked to put this on the agenda by one of the council members, but I was trying to explain that I didn't even know if our second quarter amendment, amended budget is showing up in this, because I don't know how to input that. And some of the things that haven't been put in are not going to show up, obviously. So I'm not sure these are very accurate figures. Seabird Tans will be coming in on the twenty-seventh. They'll be here at nine o'clock, and they're going to start with the bank statements from last, the beginning of last fiscal year, and they're going to work forward. So at that point in time, everything will be in, and the numbers then are going to be a lot more accurate than, than what you're going to see on, on this. So I didn't know if Danny wanted to say anything about this or not.
No, that's fine. That's what I was looking for. I just thought we needed to gauge the council on where we were at, and what's going on at this point.
So, so based on that too, since it is on agenda, I ask for a motion to table it also?
I move to table the third quarter budget figures.
I'll second that.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried. Going down the list was the old newspaper articles.
Luke and Derek were trying to figure out how to make the siren work, but then they- while they were looking around, they found these really old articles from nineteen eighty-two about when Richard Veer tried to, well, he did actually rescue a young person that was trapped in the Black River Dam. And Derek would like these articles, and he would like to take them and maybe preserve them or frame them, or something besides just have them in a folder.
Go ahead, Derek.
We'll get them framed and actually probably give them to the Historical Society, and they're going to put together a fire department wall or a section in the historical society for the fire department, kind of, you know. And while we were up there kind of looking around, there's lots of historical society things up in that attic that needs to be gone before something happens to them.
Yeah, the mid eighteen hundreds.
There's stuff from the eighteen hundreds, yeah, amazing stuff up there. That needs to be, I think we know somebody from the Historical Society.
Historical somebody, right?
I, you know, so, so I guess, first of all, to, I guess, can we get a motion? I guess, release newspapers to the fire department to frame for the Historical Society.
Make a motion to release the old newspaper articles to Chief Derek Badcott for the Historical Society.
I second that motion.
Any more discussion on it? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carried.
To be technical, Mr. Mayor, you're giving away city property, so I would-
We need to roll call.
Alright, I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Alright, hang on a second. Sorry, I'm not the official clerk.
Hold it, hold it, hold it.
Still process.
Okay, so, Councilmember Bader?
Yes.
Okay, Councilmember Hicks?
Yes.
Councilmember Frye?
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner?
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig?
Yes.
Me, yes. Mayor Householder?
Yes.
Carrie? Going down the next list would be brush pickup.
Brush pickup, yeah, and I don't know if we need to discuss it or not. I understand it's happening, so. I didn't know if we had to publish it.
I, I think somehow we need to get the word out to, if we know what type of routes or what days they're going, the brush pickup versus leaf pickups, you know, this is early spring.
Can we include the leaf with the brush? As, as, like, say we're going to put an article in the paper of the notification date between such and such a date and another date.
And someone, you know, I talked to Mark earlier when I seen them out there, and he said they just started, maybe Todd has more information about it, I'm not sure, but it sounded like they hadn't heard anything, so they just started doing.
Okay.
But I think if someone got with them and coordinated, that'd be the best way. We need to advertise it, because we don't want people putting it out there the week after. I'm sure PCL will go pick it up, but it creates more work, so.
Well, yeah, probably also the frequency. Really going to do it every two weeks or every three weeks?
Well, there was normally, isn't there like two times when they do it? They do it once, and then they do it like two weeks later or something?
They did zones last year.
Oh, is that how it was?
They did zones like my end of town, and another end of town, and another end of town. And then they did the brush all the way through, what, October, November, every two weeks. They would have a date for brush, same way in zones. So we probably ought to coordinate that with PCI and find out what's-
Can we just instruct you, instruct you to coordinate that with PCI?
No pressure.
We do this at Park and Rex's meeting, too.
Can you just do everything?
She doesn't get everything. Not quite everything. Lots, but not everything.
Okay, so Regina, Regina's going to go ahead and just coordinate that. The next thing is the police vehicle?
While Elena?
Go ahead, Elena.
Alright, so there's no question that we need another car. And we're very fortunate, because the salvage account with two people working now, being salvage officers, has more than enough to pay for, really for the car. Make a car payment every year. So, and that being a huge benefit to the city, because it doesn't cause the taxpayers anything. Yeah, I love it. So, my recommendation is that we get an SUV. It comes at a cost of thirty thousand and eight twenty. Then, equipment to put it in, I gave you an amended copy. They just revised their quote a little bit, but it's still, the bottom number's still the same, because that came in a little higher, and the laptop and printer came in a little lower, so we're still in the same ballpark. I highly recommend the extended warranty. It covers five hundred components. And we bought it, the city bought it last time, and I tell you, we more than, we at least twice paid for it, if not three times paid for it. I mean, you know, these cars, I mean, they get used all the time. You know, the damage on them is an exuberant amount, because they're, you know, running all that equipment, and things break down. So it just makes sense to, you know, protect the city's investment and get the warranty. I mean, I go for the warranty every time, just because, and I said, more than paid for, for themselves. So the financing that I provided is from the Ford Motor Company, and they call it a lease, but it's really not a lease. It's just their lease payments, and then for one dollar, the city gets the car. We don't pay for any extra mileage. It's just called a lease, and so that could be a little confusing when you read it and you say, lease, so I want to own it. And certainly, the mayor there, he was talking to me before the meeting about possibly going to a credit union or somewhere like that. That's definitely an option. So possibly we can get the car lower. I don't know if they do municipal leases or not, but it's something that we can definitely explore, and I'm willing to do that, absolutely. There is a SUV in stock. They had two. Now they only have one left. I told them to hold it for us in case the council decided to go ahead and purchase this. And like I said, you know, the four-year lease with warranties, twelve thousand nine hundred and twenty-three dollars for payments of that, and the salvage account will fully support that, so.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
That I've asked, but I never got a specific answer, and you probably still don't have it. What's the mileage on the SUV, the fuel mileage?
On the SUV?
Like miles per gallon? How much do you get? Do you get twelve miles? Do you get eighteen miles? Do you get?
Yeah, I could get it for you. I, I don't have it right off the top of my head.
I'm of the SUV, which everybody knows, because I've been complaining about it a little bit. But I think that we need two vehicles, and I think that charger needs to go at some point in the near future, so hopefully we can do this. And then in the fall, if we can get that grant, really nice. I'd like to see us get a sedan, though, the next time around. Do we need a motion, or do we want to discuss this some more?
Thing that I want, I do want to add, is because in December, the council had asked me to apply for that grant, and I did apply. So his message to us, though, is clear. If you apply, you know, we don't have the money right now, but the money may be available, no guarantees, in the fall. And he said, just make sure the council understands that you guys, you know, will have to purchase a vehicle then, because we've applied for the grant, so.
I got a question, though.
Yes.
Do you have the money for the first year's payment?
Well, the city does.
And, and do you anticipate having the money next, or next year's payment?
I do.
To show them that everything goes like it is now?
She's collected that much.
Already.
And, and a lot less than here, so.
Yeah, I, I do, and there's two, you know, there's two of us working, so I think we'll have the money to do a lot of things, for the police department, to, you know, help pay for various things. Like uniforms and-
That money is considered city money?
Yep, that's right.
Because obviously, you're not doing it for nothing.
Right. That's the city's portion. Yep, that's right.
That's the city's portion, okay.
Well, as Elena stated before, there's two different ways. When she does it in her time, the city does make some money, but not as much as she's doing it on her time when she's working for the city of Bangor.
Right. Well, if I do inspection when I'm working for the city of Bangor, so if a citizen or resident or nearby resident comes and wants a salvage inspection and I'm working, that money directly goes to the city.
Are we producing this vehicle to the state fleet?
Yes, yes, we are.
I would like to add something as far as Elena's asking for the interceptor SUV. With the winter conditions we have around here, I think one of the cars being SUV would be a great idea. As far as mileage, these cars really need, not odometers, but they need hour meters, because they run twenty-four, seven. So the mileage isn't there, no matter what you're driving. It's running computers going and everything else. But I think it's a little safer to have at least one of them as an SUV. Not so much for a chase scene, but basically, you've got four-wheel drive under you when you're dealing with some pretty nasty roads around. Four-wheel drive or all-wheel drive, yeah.
And I agree with that, except for the fact that the new interceptors, the SUV and the sedan versions are purpose-built for police. They're not like the old Crown Vics that were repurposed.
Right.
And I think there's three or four different variations of the sedan. The sedan sits on the same frame as the SUV.
SUV.
It's equal height off the ground. Under my understanding, it is, it comes in a front-wheel-drive configuration, which is something we've used, but the, the three top tiers are all-wheel drive. And so I think it's also a good alternative, because no matter what, we'll have the SUV that's four-wheel-drive or all-wheel-drive. I'm not a hundred percent sure on that one, but the vehicles have the capability too. And the fuel mileage that you get out of the sedans are up near the mid twenties to low thirties. So I know the SUV isn't quite as good as that. I just have a buddy that drives one. And it's got the twin turbo on it, and he said he gets about twelve out of it. And so I'm, that's the only thing that made me a little nervous, but he probably drives it harder than we should.
So are you talking the Ford Explorer, or are you talking Ford Taurus?
Explorer.
Explorer. Explorer.
Do they have any Ford Taurus all-drives available?
I could check, they have a, you know, the interceptor package for the...
Ford Taurus.
Yeah, but I don't know if they have them in stock, I know that they have the SUV in stock.
I'm okay with the SUV at this point, I just wanna see the next one be a car. Yeah, one of each, I think it makes sense.
Yeah, I would think that the SUV would be just a little bit stronger and tougher than a car, personally.
Right, in the winter conditions, I mean, it just, you know, I wanna be able to get to anyone who calls nine-one-one, and, you know...
Well, remember, too, when we talk SUVs, they have a highest tendency to flip over.
That's true.
So there's pros and cons, no matter how we look at it. We know sedans are better gas mileage, but the downfall of SUVs usually should be tougher, but they have a higher top level.
Those SUVs aren't like the SUVs that you see, though, like, if you've seen the new county vehicles that they have in the South Haven ones, I think they have a lower center of gravity, they're a little wider. They're really, yeah, well, they're really nice, either one is really nice, I'm just thinking about, you know, we haven't had a SUV, I don't think since we've had a police department, and... But if she wants it, she's paying for it.
I think it would be nice to have both.
Extra money, kind of.
So Derek here was nice enough to look up, I mean, it's, it's really, actually, I'm surprised how similar they are. Yeah, they're, yeah, just two miles per gallon. And it's, sedan is eighteen twenty-six twenty-one, city highway combined, and then the all-wheel drive is sixteen twenty-one eighteen.
So close to getting that.
Yeah, pretty close to that, thank you, looking that up.
So I guess I'm asking the city council members, we got two options here, either we make a motion to approve one of these for a new base vehicle, or we table it.
I move a... Go ahead. Motion, because we are down to just one squad car, and we're trying to build the police force, and it probably is gonna look a little bit more enticing to hire somebody. If we could tell them we've got more than one car here. And she does have, with the program that she's working to make the payments, so it's really at a low cost to us. I would like to make a motion, and I would move ahead with what she's talking about as available, and if that's what she thinks the police department needs, with the mileage and everything being so close, I make a motion that we approve it tonight.
I second that motion.
You guys, I'll Scott the motion, we discussed it. I would recommend, too, that you guys would make a motion that we do pick up the extended warranty.
Absolutely.
Well, we did it as presented.
Well, I think he did it as presented.
Well, I guess, I guess you're right.
Oh, that's right, there's two different presentations.
And also, I would probably recommend, based on Elena, you're going for the four-year lease?
Well, at this point, because the salvage account has that in there already, so we can go ahead and, you know, purchase it. We will, between myself and Regina, we will definitely investigate a credit union option, to see if it's less expensive. So, but...
Don't let that delay the process, though, if that's gonna be something that's...
I'm gonna make just a couple calls.
Were you making the motion with the extended warranty?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And the four-year lease?
And the four-year lease?
Yeah.
I amend my motion to the same. And I think Elena's doing a good job, from what I've seen so far, in how she's figuring out these things, and finding ways to do things for the department at lower cost. So...
So any more discussion? Motion on the table is for a new police Ford interceptor SUV with extended five-year warranty, for a total price of...
I'm sorry.
This is five-year, one hundred K.
Five-year, hundred thousand mile warranty. Price for forty-six thousand, seven hundred and fifty-seven dollars. Looking after a four-year lease with warranty, looking at four installment payments for twelve thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars and thirty-four cents per year, unless we get a cheaper financing rate. Is that the motion you put on the table?
That's the motion we have on the table.
Is that's what's been seconded?
Yes.
Have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Bader.
Yes.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yes.
Farmer, yes, Householder?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Don't let them tear it up.
Oh, no.
I don't know, I've seen your SUV.
Let's bring it another time. Moving down the list was item S, Pat Bader. What was the...
I asked her to be on to the agenda, I think we need to set a hard deadline, as far as how long she's with the city. And I'd like Regina to set that now, and... No pressure. Well, do you want me to set the hard deadline? I think it'd be good to...
We've been saying at the end of the month, so...
You just tell me a date, I just want a date.
You wanna say May first?
I'll say May one.
What'd you say?
That's good.
Is there a motion for this vote? I can vote. Everybody else can vote.
Harold has to abstain.
Did they want?
May first, mhm.
Okay, is there a motion on the table?
I move the... I'm not sure, I'm not sure how I'd word that, because it's not really, it's up to Regina, is it not? Does it matter how I, what I say?
Well, she already said May first.
Just make the motion anyways, it's a recommendation to the...
I would make a motion for the subcontractor working.
Greg, your point, it is entirely up to the city manager, you're right. So the council, the best you can do is encourage her to...
So still make the motion, but it's her choice.
It's her choice.
No pressure. I move that we set a hard deadline for, to end Pat Bader's employment with the city on May first.
Is there a second? I'll second. Open for any more discussion?
Yeah, I think, I don't know, but I think that we should possibly look into the possibility of getting some temp in here, and I feel that if we contact the MML, I think that they have the sources to refer and everything, and I think that would alleviate some of the problems.
Good, Danny.
Didn't we last week approve career connections from offering us some help?
That was...
But that's not for the treasurer.
Yeah, that's just part-time.
Not for any, anything to do with the money.
Is Pat doing the treasurer's job right now? Do we have any candidates for the treasurer's job?
Yes, we do, we have one.
Right, adds up there right now.
One resume.
Adds up here.
So we also know the accounting group will also be here, as Regina stated earlier, on the twenty-seventh. So it should be a good break, overlap there, break. So there is a motion on the table, any more discussion? Let's keep moving on. Since it is, I'm just gonna do a roll call on this.
Sure.
Okay, Councilmember Bader.
I have to abstain.
Councilmember Hicks.
Yes.
Councilmember Frye.
Yes.
Councilmember Tanner.
Yes.
Councilmember Koenig.
Yeah.
Me, yes, and Mayor, Householder.
Yes. Motion approved, as our attorney, she does work for the city manager, ours. Going down the list, we're opening up number eleven for opportunity for public comments, please state your name, you got three minutes.
To Kim McLaren, back to Parks and Rec Advisory Board, we all know that our Apple logo on the caboose in Charles Park is undergoing some changes. Now, as Parks and Rec, we came up with the idea that we sent interment to city council to consider the idea of the old locomotive design, as well as the new Amtrak design, to go on to that. But we would have to get permission from Amtrak if y'all agreed to do that. And keep the Apple, the Train City USA, and all in the new one. Richard Green is one of our new members, he's an artist, and he is connected also with the gentleman artist that did our mural by the railroad track. So it would be, I'm asking city council to decide if they would like to go with the old-style train alone, or go ahead and go with the new style, I mean, with the old-style and the new-style Amtrak. And hopefully, by going with Amtrak, we discussed it, we might be able to get some grant money in the future.
Can we see, can we see it, comparative?
Can I add to this? Said he is, he'd sketch something out, but what he was going to do is in the Apple, he would have the old train coming in one direction, and the Amtrak coming out the other, which should excite some Amtrak people, as far as maybe some donations or grant money that could be for painting the caboose. And he's going to work further on trying to come up with a sample for us, not just clip art, that's something he's drawing out, and he's a commercial artist, and I've seen some of his stuff, and it's excellent. Says being a member of the Parks and Rec committee.
Should we have it on the agenda, then, for the next meeting, or, I mean, this isn't really something to discuss?
Probably not about it, I'd give it on the agenda for the next meeting.
Why don't you, so can't you get him to sketch out some?
Yeah, he said he would, to give us a sample.
So we could take a look and see what?
Then I'll contact him tomorrow, or actually later tonight, and tell him to get me an idea on paper that we can present at the next city council meeting, and maybe we can get this completed down there.
We'll have a Parks and Rec meeting between now and then, won't we?
Be the second Monday, yes.
So he could sketch it out for us, and we could see it, and approve it to bring to the council.
And to conclude one other thing, in order to involve the city in this, Richard had come up with the idea of paint by number. We're all familiar with that, with our children. But what it would be, is any, say, anyone on city council that wanted to go down and put just a little bit on, then anyone in town could come and do it, and by the time it's done, they would come in and touch it up, and then the community would be involved that way.
Awesome.
So, any other questions? Thank you.
Like I said, if he's prepared, and he's ready, we'll have him at the next city council meeting. If he's not prepared, agenda from, I mean, until he's ready.
Right. He said he's already folded a little bit, and he says it'll just take a little bit more detail, he had it looking really good.
The floor is open for public comments?
Mary Lee Wiles, I just have a question about this pickup that we have twice a year. I see other people putting out stuff, they stare it out by the road. I can name three places right now, they put their trash out. I don't like that, you know? I don't like to drive around town and see stuff, you'll come along and pick it up. Is there something we can do with that, when you see it?
It was kind of a confusing thing, because it was in the paper a couple weeks ago, and Kim put it in there by accident, for, I think it was for April sixth or something.
Wow, I didn't know that.
Putting stuff out there.
I didn't see it in the paper, but...
Or no, it was on the water bill, I'm sorry, it was on the water bill. And it was just under by mistake, because I think it was the time they did it last year, because I've seen it driving around here.
But that, that hasn't just happened now, I'm talking about year-round.
Oh, sure.
And there's, as I can do, name that do it all summer long. They get something they don't want, they stare it out by the...
Yeah, that should be, if we follow that back up, Regina could get with the code enforcement, like you said, we're not supposed to put the trash out.
It's just trashy, and I don't like to see it.
Sure, that's true.
Any more comments? Okay, going down the list is board commissions, appointments, and correspondence, probably don't have enough for that today, do we? Let's go ahead and start with city council member comments, Danny?
Oogie, I have a need for a second water meter at my house, because we have a pool in the backyard, and I don't wanna pay sewer job. So I'd heard this morning that we possibly weren't gonna be doing that this summer, is that true?
I don't know if it's true or not. I know some of the irrigation meters have been used for...
Right.
But I don't believe they're totally out of them.
I talked to Jimmy, and Jimmy said, as far as he knew, they're available, just, you know, I mean, I don't need one today, but I'm saying, though, I don't wanna go that way. Also, in talking about our, our costs going up, and going up, and going up, if we just take a look at what in the last year we have done as a council, and I'm not cutting the council down, but I'm saying, not counting any legal fees, but with wages that we're paying, separation fees and stuff, we're over a hundred and thirty thousand dollars right now. And I mean, that's, that's not in the budget from July first, so it's like, now, we gotta get a handle on this, if the people are even gonna have any faith at all in us. I really believe that.
That's about all I got, kids.
Just touch on the, in the packet, the South Haven Community Hospital Authority presentation. The hospital has a strong financial backing right now, I know it looks like on paper that we are losing money, the finances are down right now. It's getting really tough for hospitals right now, because our payer mix, or the type of insurances, when I say payer mix, I mean, the type of insurance is that the hospital receives are mainly Medicare, Medicaid, and the reimbursement is way down for those, and it will continue to go down. So the hospital will have some challenges in the future, trying to stay afloat. Right now, we have a strong balance sheet, and although it looks as though we're losing money on the paper, it is better than it was the previous year. So just kinda keep that in mind, and just, you know, try to use as much as possible to keep it afloat, because we need more insurance payers through the hospital to kinda balance things out. Oh, I also wanna, I think we need to make a, figure out some way to get a committee started for these policies and procedures, because that's dropped off, and we do need to get some new policies and procedures in place, as we talked about the last meeting. So we do need to work on getting a new committee together to do that. And other than that, I just wanna say, I appreciate the job that everybody's doing, I think everybody's doing a good job, hard, so I'd just like to keep things moving, and good to see Brian again, him back. But other than that, I don't have anything else.
Harold?
I don't have anything else.
Jim?
Well, I think that one of the things that, what we've, what we've been doing as a council, I think that a lot of the changes are being made, I think that in the long run, it's gonna save us money, and what we've been doing, and I think that there's things that's been, been done that's cost the city money, that shouldn't have been, we shouldn't have had to have paid out, but that, saying, I think that once we do have our town hall meeting, where we can advise the citizens of Bangor of what we've done and everything, I think that we will make a good presentation to everybody.
Thank you, Jim. Lynn?
I can't write into mine. Well, the first thing I have is, I don't know how many of you saw this in newspaper, but kudos to Mark and PCI. We got the largest fluoride grant of any city in the state of Michigan. So kudos to them for doing that for us. So I don't know if you saw that, most of the towns got two and three thousand dollars, we got seventeen thousand.
What paper was that in?
That was in the Herald-Pladium.
Maybe a week or so ago.
So kudos to them. My other comment is, shame on people who are costing the city money for frivolous things, like frivolous ethics charges, frivolous FOIA requests. We are paying the attorney from Lansing almost eighteen hundred dollars, that's all of our money, that's taxpayer money that we have paid out, that when all is said and done, there would be no merit to these claims. Also, when people present frivolous FOIA claims to the city of Bangor, it not only takes Regina's time, who she's up to her eyelashes right now, since she's right now two people short. So, you know, they're taking her time, which of course is tax dollar money, again, that could be used for things to move the city forward, instead of things to make us look bad in the press. So I just wanna say again, kudos to PCI, thank you for making us look good, that's awesome, and shame on the people who are doing the other things.
Thank you, Lynn. Luke?
Well, I'd like to say congratulations on her new vehicle. Hopefully, she takes care of it very well. Now, it doesn't have to be as bad as you're the only one driving it for a year, but, close. I think that Bangor's looking really nice, I think, I've seen a lot of people out and about walking that I don't normally see downtown, that's been nice, to see everybody getting out and about and enjoying the city, and some of the things that the DDA has done downtown over the past several years. As far as the budget goes, and... As far as the budget goes and, and some of the money issues and some of the leadership issues over the past while that I've been here, it's too bad that some of the employees weren't keeping a better handle on things. And I hope that we're moving past that and you make changes to try to correct the problem and that's, that's all you can do. Once you realize there's a problem, you have to fix it and keep moving forward. I think we're in good shape. We've got a few other minor things to work out. One of them that's not so minor is the, the PCI contract. That's extremely important to me. And I wish we would have already had a meeting. I've been complaining about it for a while. Hopefully we'll have that negotiated soon with Brian, not in a month or two.
We talked, I'm sorry.
So, no, the, the PCI thing, they seem to be doing a pretty good job. I've seen that they were out in the rain by my place picking up brush today. It's good to see that happening. I think they're, I think everybody's doing something on the council. I hope that people stop wasting our time, but if they feel that we did something wrong, by all means, do what you have to do, but that's all I have, I guess.
Thank you, Luke. One of the council members brought up paying people off in excess of $100,000. That's really misleading. It's not even half that. Then when you look at the numbers, some of those people were due time anyways for vacation time.